We are back in session. We need to open the Board of Equalization to conduct business. Marshall, will you swear in?
(laughing).
The board members?
Will stand. You will stand on the bough where you right hand. Repeat after me. I, please state your name.
Hi, John Bell.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
I'm sorry, do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Wayne County, North Carolina.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Wayne County, North Carolina.
And that I will not allow my actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review.
And I will not allow my actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God.
Thank you, if you'll swear, sign your oath.
Is there anyone here to appeal any of their values?
This morning.
If not, Mr. May, if you would give a brief update on the Equalization.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We don't have anyone here to appear before you this morning. We have, we, normally we start receiving informal appeals beginning in January and we have right now thirty-three owners who've appealed values on forty-three parcels. Those are broken down, thirty-seven residential and six commercial. We'll continue to work these. Once we finalize them, notify the owners. If they want to appear before you, then we'll schedule them to do that. That's where we are right now.
But normally y'all resolve a lot of them before, before they ever come to us?
That, normally that happens, yes.
Okay, normally.
Depending.
Any questions for Mr. Orton?
Excuse me.
Mr. Doherty.
Is that an annual thing that?
Yes, yeah. We, obviously when you have your candidate-wide reevaluation or reappraisal, then that's when you get most of your business.
Right.
But yes, every year you have to hold the Board of Equalization Review. Anybody that wishes to feel their value can do it at that time. And what we normally do, as I said, we normally in January start taking informal appeals. We'll have them come in, we'll get them the paperwork, have them fill the information out, supply it to us, then we'll start working those appeals. Actually going out and looking into property, reviewing the information they've submitted to us.
So you reevaluate all properties every eight years?
Correct.
But if in the fourth year, a property owner looks at their tax bill and they say, well, you know, my property is not worth that, they can then appeal to the tax office on an annual basis that's opened up?
They can appeal on an annual basis. Now, we're still locked in to our schedule of values as of our reevaluation.
Right.
But what happens, sometimes for whatever reason, someone, if they think they've got a value problem, they don't appeal during the revaluation, they may miss it first year, second year, third year. Sometimes maybe something's happened to their property.
Right.
Maybe there's some, you know, some conditions that weren't, didn't exist at revaluation time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question.
Mr. Page.
Just a basic question. Those numbers you just read out, is that about average or, or is that fluctuating down year to year?
It fluctuates a little bit. I'd say that's probably in a non-revaluation year, probably about average, I'd say.
I was just curious.
It's gonna change.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Page.
Sure. Mr. May. Just as a matter of information for the public, am I correct, on the year of an evaluation, if I remember correctly, the cutoff point of the comparables that you use is actually the year before?
Correct, because a revaluation are effective the first January one of a given year. Any sales, anything that we look at for that revaluation would be for the prior year, sometimes the prior two years, depending on how many sales we can locate when we're, when we're doing that.
So, so the, the number of appeals you get is gonna determine whether real estate is up during the year of evaluation or down as compared to what you're comparing to?
Well, it depends, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Depends.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? David? Thank you, David. Do we need a motion to recess this?
You're gonna recess until May twentieth?
We're gonna recess until May the twentieth at eight-thirty a.m. Do we need a motion on that? Can I just?
You can just, you can just recess.
Okay, recess. The Board of Equalization Review will reconvene on May the twentieth, twenty-fourteen, at eight-thirty a.m. Thank you. We've got about five minutes before we start our regular meeting. We have recessed for five minutes. It's nine o'clock, time to convene for Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'd like to ask if anyone has their cell phones or pagers on, please cut them off or either put them on silent mode. Invocation, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we pray, I want to read a verse of scripture from Second Corinthians four eighteen. Paul writes, "The things which are seen are temporary, but the things which are not seen are eternal." A good example of this is, most of you, some of you probably know Fanny Crosby. She lost her sight as an infant, but yet amazingly, she went on to become one of the most well-known lyricists of Christian hymns. During her long life, she wrote over nine thousand hymns. Among them are such enduring favorites as Blessed Assurance and To God Be the Glory. So, we are reminded today that what is eternal, what we can't see is eternal. This is a perfect example of that. Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for the freedom that we have to come together today to conduct the business of Wayne County. And I ask, Father, that you give us the wisdom to conduct ourselves in a way that is pleasing to you. Today, Father, I ask a special blessing on those around us in our county, state, and country, yes, even our world, that are hurting today, whether it be health-related or quality of life. Father, soften our hearts here in this country, this country of plenty, that we may be willing to give of ourselves and of our resources to others as you have given and blessed us. Ask a special blessing today for the men and women that are serving in our military, our police force, our fire departments, our emergency services, that, Father, that they may know beyond a shadow of a doubt that you are with them and keeping them safe. But today, most of all, Father, I ask an extra measure of your love and your mercy on America, that we may all experience a renewal of the Ten Commandments that sets the moral standard for our society as a whole. And as we conduct this Commissioners' meeting today, Lord, we know that our decisions that we make are not, are not the final decision, that you are the final decision-maker. Revelation one eight says, "I am the Omega, Alpha, and Omega, the beginning and the end." These things are asking your holy name this day. Amen.
Who would stand, feast upon?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Mr. Bell. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Wood. Mr. Chairman, we have two things to add. One is the appointment to the Marmaxx Fire Protection Commission, and we discussed that at the eight o'clock meeting. Also, the school board has adopted a resolution moving forward with the design bid build format that we had agreed to at the last meeting, and they have sent a resolution over to you this morning. I received it between the eight o'clock and the nine o'clock meeting. I place one at each of your places up there. In addition to that, since they are moving forward with the construction manager at risk process now, we need to move forward as quickly as possible and appoint them our agent for constructing these schools. As you recall, and what you're going to do later in this meeting is you're going to adopt a patch, a packet of documents naming them your agent for doing the renovation work on the twelve point three million dollars worth renovation work on three schools. And we will be going through that same process on these two schools. And as you recall, the reason for that is, is that the county, if it is the owner of the buildings, is eligible to get reimbursement of the sales taxes spent on the schools. For whatever reason, North Carolina law does not allow that for school systems. So what we do is we temporarily transfer the property over to the Board, to the Board of Commissioners from the Board of Education, and that's what the process will be on the twelve point three million. We will also do that later for the schools. But to start that process so that they can move forward in getting their bids on the street and get the bids in so we can go to the local government commission, we're asking that today you add the resolution that Mr. Parker has drafted up for you, which basically says that the schools will be your agent in, in building these two schools. And it also says that we'll enter it into the agreement, which I just talked about there, for the completion of them.
And add special.
So we'd like to add that.
And special recognition.
Yes. And the one other thing that we have, we want to add a special recognition to the agenda at the beginning.
Thank you. Has anyone else got any adjustments to the agenda? If not, we do have a special recognition this morning, and I'm gonna ask the entire board, please, if they would, to step down front, and Mr. Steve King, if you would come up with us, please.
We're standing right here at the microphone so our listeners can hear. It's my honor and privilege, Mr. Steve King, I'd like to thank you for your many years of service on this board, and we'd like to present this plaque to you. The Wayne County, the County of Wayne, in appreciation of dedicated service as a county commissioner, Steve P. King, December the first, two thousand eight, to April the twenty-fifth of twenty fourteen. And Steve, I'd like to present this to you, and we thank you for your dedicated service, and we're excited, and I know you're excited about your new position with the governor, but thank you so much for, for your dedication to Wayne County. And, and don't forget us.
No, sir, I won't.
And, have you, do you want to say anything, or?
Well, I will. Okay. All right. I thank you so much for this morning's recognition. I really appreciate this honor. And there's a lot that I could say, and I, and I won't, but there's just a minute I want to tell you that, and those that are listening and watching live this morning, is that this is like maybe a college that I never attended. It is a classroom. As a freshman in college, I guess, or a freshman in high school, going into a high school and having four years to graduate, and this is what I have done in five years, is use this as a classroom. And there was one part of, of this, when I came in in oh-eight, is that I'm honored to say that I am leaving like I came in, clean, with my integrity intact, that I wavered not away from what was right. With every moment I spent in this classroom, I would encourage each of you to do the same, to not get distracted, to stay focused on the people that you represent, and always do what is right. There are so many of us in elected positions at this moment, even today, as we saw in the news this morning, where those have jeopardized their seat representing the people by doing something because they got distracted and they did not stay focused what was important. The other part I want to finish with is that the governor reaches out through me for customer service for you and the people of Wayne County and thirty-three other counties that I represent. And the governor wants to make sure that I be plugged into you and to the municipalities with the mayor, the county managers, and the commissioners, the sheriffs, and the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, those who are leaders, that we aren't all leaders in some fashion. But his goal is to make sure that he understands the people, and that is my role as we move forward as the Director for Eastern North Carolina. There's a lot going on in health services, as you know, commerce, transportation, jobs. We're excited about Eastern North Carolina, and I'm honored to serve the governor in this, this position. But as much so, I am honored to have been a Commissioner, serving with you in Wayne County. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next item, we've had to shuffle the agenda around a little bit. We had to move part of our new business up to the top to save some of our guests some time from having to sit here all day. First item, filling the District Four vacancy on the Board of Commissioners presentation by the County Attorney, but before that, I have Mr. Bob Jackson, Chairman of the GOP Party of Wayne County, would like to come up and make a recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of Board. First, I'd like to express the appreciation of the Wayne County Republican Party to Mr. Steve King for his five years of service. I have never met a more dedicated and, and determined person to, to fill their position the best they could, more so than Steve King. It is with a great deal of pleasure that I make a recommendation to you this morning to fill Steve's seat, vacant seat. We, we did meet and determined that one person would be our selection, and that person is the one that we'll recommend to you this morning. And if it's okay, I will read that recommendation to the Wayne County Commissioners from Wayne County Republican Executive Committee. Please be advised that the Wayne County Executive Committee made in closed session on Monday, May fifth, twenty fourteen, at eight p.m. to interview candidates for District Four Commissioner's seat, Steve King's, King's seat. The committee unanimously selected Archie Joe Gurley III to serve as District Four Commissioner until an election can be held in November twenty fourteen. Signed, Bob Jackson, Chairman. Appreciate that very much, and that would be our recommendation that you consider, Mr. Gurley, for, for that seat.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend a motion that we accept the recommendation of the GOP and appoint Mr. Archie Gurley, Joe Gurley, as, to the Board of Commissioners to replace Commissioner Steve King, as of June the first, twenty fourteen.
I have a motion on the floor, in discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doherty.
I'm not sure I recognize who this is, Archie? I'm sorry, I just had to say it.
Mr. Chairman, I will also amend that soon as the county manager make a statement to that effect.
I want to say, Mr. Page. I'm just glad to know that I won't be the youngest man sitting up here on this board any longer. Somebody that'll have to listen to me for a change. Look forward to working with you, Joe.
Mr. Does he want to make his comment?
Yes, Mr. Wood, if you would, kind of clarify the board and, and our listeners on what the process is gonna be for Mr. Gurley.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've met with Joe, and what we've determined is, he's still got a few things he'd like to get accomplished as the Director of the Office of Emergency Services. So what we'd like to do is have him remain employed through May thirty-first, which should give him time to finish up on those projects. So what we're requesting is that you make the effective date of this appointment, June the first. So you, you would vote today, but it would take effect on June the first. And during that time, you're going to have two meetings, one of which you vote and one of which you just receive the information on the budget. The budget meeting would be on May twenty-seventh, the regular meeting would be May twentieth. And during those two days, Joe would take vacation days so that he would be here on his time and, and not, you know, while he was working for the county. So again, he would remain employed through May thirty-first. That gives him time to finish some projects. Also, as you may imagine, it takes a little bit of time to file the necessary paperwork for the North Carolina Local Government Employees Retirement System and that sort of thing as well. So this, this is what we've agreed to do, if y'all are in agreement with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I would like to amend my motion to include what the county manager just stated.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Add that to it.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor with Mr. Bell's amendment. All in favor, show a right hand. Unanimous vote. Ms. Marshall.
Yes, sir.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Gurley. Look forward to, look, look forward to working with you, not that we haven't, hadn't in the past, but, but welcome aboard.
Do you guys want to make any comments?
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming, I'd like to ask him a question. Do we call you Archie? Or what?
Tell you as I tell my lovely bride, just call me, it's time to eat. Thank you, I'm most humbled and appreciative of the appointment. I ask you for your support and guidance, and sincerely thank you for your vote of confidence. I look forward to working with each one of you, and as important, or more important, I look forward for a successful Wayne County government and for all of our people, everyone that transits through here on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Mr. Doherty.
The more I think about that, it probably would be a good idea to call you Archie, since there's already a Joe here. Just saying.
We will not get y'all confused.
Okay.
Let's see, we're taking care of number twelve, we got that motion either way. Next item, number one, under new business, motion to approve to May twenty-fourteen is Mental Health Month in Wayne County Proclamation. Mr. Page?
Yes, sir.
You read that?
I'll take care of it. North Carolina, Wayne County, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being and caring for your mind as well as your body is good for your overall health and vital for success in your personal life, at work, and at school, and whereas mental illness will strike nearly one in four adults and children in a given year, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status, and whereas the mental health problems are treatable as many physical illnesses and, and people who have mental illness can recover into full productive lives, and whereas estimated two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illness and addictive disorders to American businesses, governments, and families has grown to a hundred billion annually, and whereas community-based services that respond to individual family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community, and whereas East Point Health, excuse me, East Point Human Services and the Mental Health Association of Wayne County are engaged in helping people to achieve healthy minds and healthy lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May two thousand fourteen is Mental Health Month in Wayne County, and calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public, private institutions, businesses, and schools to recognize the importance of mental as well as physical health, and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and the needs for appropriate and accessible services for all people who have mental illnesses. This sixth day of May two thousand fourteen, George Wayne Eckott, Chairman. I make this a form of motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I have a motion on the floor, in discussion. Then all in favor, show a right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Thanks to Mr. Page.
Yes, sir.
Next item, motion to approve to May twenty-fourteen is Relay for Life Month in Wayne County Proclamation, and I will read that one. This is dear to my heart. I've had quite a bit of dealings with cancer in my family, and this is dear to my heart. As you can see, it may not look good in purple, but I'm proud to wear my purple today. Whereas Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's senior tier activity and celebrates cancer survivor, caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to disease, empowers individuals and communities to fight against cancer, and whereas money raised for Relay for Life supports the American Cancer Society mission of saving lives, creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays, by helping people stay well, by helping people get well. stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cures for cancer and fighting back. And whereas, since 1985, Relay for Life movement has grown into a worldwide phenomenon, raising more than $4 billion to fight cancer. And whereas Relay for Life in Wayne County is a community gathering that helps raise awareness and funds for the American Cancer Society to continue to do research and to assist with patient service, education, and the missions to eliminate cancer as a health risk. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners urge all citizens to support Relay for Life by displaying their purple ribbons in support of Show Your Purple Week the entire week prior to Relay for Life event on May 16th, 17th, 2014. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim May 2014 is Relay for Life Month in Wayne County, and urges all citizens to show their support for the American Cancer Society annual Relay for Life in Wayne County to be held on May 16th, 17th, 2014 at the Wayne County Regional Fairgrounds. This the 6th day of May 2014, George Wayne Acott, Junior Chairman. I submit that as a form of a motion. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, show a sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous. And also, we have Ms. Brenda Robinson.
Robinson.
Robinson from Relay for Life, and she would like to say just a word to it, please.
Just briefly, I just want to say that 100 years ago, when the American Cancer Society started, the word cancer was a death sentence. There wasn't a lot of hope for treatment. And because of the money that Relay for Life has raised over the years and provided funding for research, there is no longer a death sentence. There's many cancers today that are treatable, people are surviving it, and it's because of the research. So we thank you for your continued support, and we hope to see you all at Relay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day Proclamation. Mr. Bell, I think you're going to read that for us, please.
Okay. Whereas member of the Wayne County Sheriff Office plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of Wayne County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their county law enforcement agency. And whereas member of the Wayne County Sheriff Department recognize their duties to serve the citizen by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement community of Wayne County increasingly provide a vital role, vital police services, and therefore, I'm sorry, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners call upon the citizen of Wayne County to observe the week of May 11th through 17th, 2014 as National Police Week, and appropriate ceremonies and observance.
Observance. I'm getting all mixed up here this morning.
My glass is filling up with water. Observers in which all people may join in commemorating past and present law enforcement officers who have rendered a dedicated service to communities by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners call upon all citizens of Wayne County to participate in the Wayne County Observers on May 7th, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. The Wayne County Community College Public Safety Memorial in honor of the law enforcement officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in service of and have become disabled or in the performance of the duty. The Board of Commissioners recognize and pay its respect to our injured officers and the survivors of our fallen heroes. This 6th day of May 2014, George Wayne Acott, Chairman, Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion, show a sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Sheriff Pierce, would you like to make some comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure and my honor to be here this morning, to appear before you as your sheriff and as a servant of this great county. There have been many men and women that have gone before me and my staff that have served this county, this state, and this nation that have dedicated their lives to serve in the law enforcement capacity. And as we celebrate National Police Week, we want to remember those that not only have served, but also that have dedicated and given the ultimate sacrifice, their lives in the performance of their duties. And so I thank you for this proclamation and for the remembrance that you have presented this morning.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do I have a motion that we approve to minutes of the March 25th meeting, April 1st meeting, April 8th, April 15th, and April 25th? Sub moving, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion on the floor that we approve to minutes of those meetings, any discussion? No discussion?
I just wanted to type Marshall for putting those together, because it was very, very lengthy. It took me quite a while to read, so thanks for your good work.
No other discussion, all in favor, we adoption of the minutes, but please show a sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Appellate Committee, Mr. Mayo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you can find it, the appointments are about almost more than halfway your book.
What's your page name?
Uh, no page number, don't have one, but the one before it is page 18.
And there's more than one 18 in this, huh?
There's about two 18s in here, I think. But that gives you any idea?
Give us just a second.
Yes, sir.
It's about April 25th dash 18.
I'm sorry.
It's the April 25th meeting minutes, dash 18.
Yes, April 20th. I asked for April 25th, meeting minutes.
No, you're going the wrong way.
You got it.
That's 18, but that's the wrong one. There it is, for your will. Everybody found it? All Commissioners found it? Okay. The first, the first appointment is, even though it's not highlighted, is the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. We have a reappointment this morning of Gerald Jones to continue to serve on this board, Development Board, and I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion on the floor, any discussion? No discussion, show a sign of right hand for Mr. Gerald Jones. Motion carries unanimous. If you turn the page, the next highlighted one is Child Fatality Prevention Team. This is a new appointment, and the Board, the Appellate Committee recommends Andrew Kukero as an appointment to the Child Fatality Prevention Team. That's in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion on the floor, any discussion? No discussion, please show a sign of right hand for Mr. Andrew Kukero. Motion carries unanimous. If you were to turn the page, the next one is the Wayne County Veterans Services Advisory We have, we have three today that would be reappointed, and they are Bill Boyd, William Graham, and Al Green. And I recommend and make a motion that we accept those three to be reappointed to the Wayne County Veterans Services Advisory Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. I have a motion on the floor for Bill Boyd, William S. Graham, and Al Green to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee. All in favor, show a sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous. The next one at the bottom of the page is the Wayne County ABC Board, and the appointment to the ABC Board from the Appellate Committee is Mr. Efton Sager, and I make that in form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I would like to amend that motion and ask the Board to reappoint Mr. Joe Sawyer. Mr. Joe Sawyer have done a good job on the ABC Board, and I would like to see him remain on that board.
I have a motion on the floor, any amendment? We need that on the amendment first.
Yes, sir.
I have an amendment on the floor to nominate Mr. Joe Sawyer. Any discussion other than what Mr. Bell has stated?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Gomar.
In the past, I have asked some questions about how appointments are made or reappointed to different boards, in that the Appellate Committee meets a half hour before we meet. And this is just for some hope for clarification of the process, so that the board members who are going to vote on people would know more about it. I'm just asking someone, should that appointment, should that committee time be moved so that we know more about what we're voting on before we get to this meeting? Because in my meager understanding, sometimes folk are asked to remain on boards, and we summarily come up here and vote on them after the three members have, I guess, only studied it a half hour earlier before our briefing. So it doesn't seem to me to lend enough time to understand who it is that's going to be appointed to the boards, and then to give a chance to see if those folk want to remain on the boards, and to see if the committees who they are serving with have requested that they remain on there. So I think this process need to be looked at a little bit, because I'm not sure that I ever truly understood what, how the process worked, and I question whether or not it's absolutely fair to everyone to serve.
Mr. Mayor. That's a lot of time and effort. I've been on this Appellate Committee for two and a half years. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into this, and I'll be honest with you, I'm offended when somebody says that this Appellate Committee seems to be insignificant, because we put a lot of time into it. I'm the chairman, and I spend at least two to three hours a week looking and trying to get people right for these boards. If a board like the ABC Board does not recommend anyone to us, this Appellate Committee is responsible. Now, anyone that puts in an application online for, like for instance, the ABC Board, Ms. Marshall, am I correct? Can anyone go and look at that application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Every one of us Commissioners can go on the website and see everyone that has put in an application. This is a thankless position, everybody knows it, and we at this board, this Appellate Committee, is putting in a lot of time. If anyone would like to volunteer to take it, you need to come and do it, because it is the very best that we can do. It's not based on, it's not based on a party or anything else. What it is based on is what, if a person is qualified, and who steps up and says that I would like to serve on that committee. The ABC Board has made no recommendations to us at all. So I want to make it clear that I have put in a lot of time, Mr. Bell, Mr. Bill Payton, we put in a lot of time on this behind the scenes, trying to come up with the best solution. Yes, it's flawed, okay? It's not perfect, but it's the best we have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, wait just a minute.
I'm going to be recognized next. Mr. Payton.
For those who don't understand how this board works, we start at 7:30 in the morning. It's posted, it's an open meeting. Anyone can come and listen and watch the proceedings. You can get up a little bit earlier and come on in, and you can understand what's going on. Now, back to Mr. Sager, not only has he served on this board, honedly as a Commissioner, but he has served North Carolina in the House of Representatives, and has served Wayne County. I see him as a leader, a strong person, and I'll not change my mind on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gomar.
Mr. Chairman, I was not questioning anyone's integrity of the amount of work they've put into it, and if I hear that you put in three hours prior to you coming to the meeting, then it surely seems like you have put in an excellent amount of time, and therefore it lends to one of whether, how much of decision-making has been made before you get to the meeting that happens in the morning time. I only ask for more transparency, not to question anyone's integrity. And I'm not doubting that you do this with the greatest sincerity. I did not mention party as far as who gets on there by party, but it might be worthy to ask that question. Are we keeping all the boards balanced as far as party and race? So, you know, let's just make sure we're transparent in all these things, and surely this is not to question anyone's integrity, or the amount of time that you're committed to it, nor the qualifications of any prospective or new members coming on. But I just would want to make sure that, that anyone who has served on the board, if they wish to continue to serve on the board, that they be given ample opportunity to.
Thank you, Mr. Gomar. Mr. Dougherty.
I called a question.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, amendment, Mr. Sawyer. No other discussion, all in favor, Mr. Sawyer. Show a sign of right hand.
Oh.
Now we'll go back to Mr. Mayo's motion. A motion on the floor for Mr. Mayo, for Mr. Efton Sager. All in favor, show a sign of right hand. Next one, Mr. Mayo.
Opposed.
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 All opposed? Next one, Mr. Mayo. Okay, yeah, we have quite a few this morning. Turn the page if you will. Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors. Like to appoint Shirley Malam Edwards to take the remaining term of Lenisha Caraway, who has resigned, and this would be an appointment to take the rest of her term, Ms. Shirley Malam Edwards. I make that in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion on the floor, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, show a sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous. On that same, on that same committee, we have three reappointments. James Spicer, Mary Bartlett, Leslie Wild, I'm, Will, I'm sorry, and Lynn Williams. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint these to the Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors. A motion on the floor, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, show a sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimous. The next one down is the Wayne County Industrial and Business Park Development Corporation. Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we reappoint Commissioner Joe Daughery, myself, and William H. Payton to this board. A motion on the floor, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dougherty.
This is one board that I'm a member of that has never met and don't understand why I'm on there, but I appreciate the appointment.
It is a requirement that we have this board. Ms. Marshall, when was the last time this board has met? It's been?
Maybe 22 years ago.
Park East, developed, and it probably doesn't need to meet anymore, but it's nice that you're willing to stay on.
Just in case.
Mr. Doughty, no, no reflection on Mr. Mayo and Mr. Payton, but now you know how important you are. Next appointment, Mr. Mayo. I have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? All in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we have, we do have an addition. The Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. I'd like to, and we do have a recommendation from the, the Board of Trustees at Wayne Community College, that we appoint Danny Jackson to, to finish the rest of the term for Mrs. Lynn Whitehead, who has resigned, and I would like to make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion on the floor, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Motion carries unanimous.
I think that's it, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Moving on to unfinished business. Service on agents, monitoring results from Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging. Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet the letter from the Eastern Carolina Council. This was an excellent report back on the operations of our senior center, and I've asked Aaron McAllem to come and make a few comments to you about the letter and the monitoring visit.
Good morning. Thank you. This past February, David Rosato, the Deputy Human Services Director for the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging, did a monitoring visit at the senior center. And ECC is the agency that awards us about half a million dollars in grant money each year, so it was a very important monitoring visit. He spent about two days, and he went through our center with a fine-tooth comb, and he looked at our transportation programs, senior center operations, information assistance, in-home aid, and group respite. And I'm very proud to say he did not find a single error, went through programs, client files, paperwork, everything. In fact, he is going to use one of our departments as a model for the other counties in this region. So I wanted to just take this minute to commend my staff and publicly thank them. That represents a lot of hours, a lot of dedication. I have a wonderful, wonderful staff. Every single one of them pulls their weight and more, and this monitoring visit showed it, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Payton.
I just wanted to say something there, and her staff. I do commend the work that you're doing. Having served in government all the years that I've served, and have many reviews that I had, and have no findings whatsoever, is just, is great work. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Next item, update regarding gateway rate increase. Mr. Wood.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to briefly update you on that. We had a meeting with the Gateway Board. Aaron was there, Lord Parker, and Pam Holt, of course Pam is on that board. We feel like we're making progress towards getting some changes in the rate schedule, and we'll continue to have some discussions with them, and should have something back to you, I would say, before the end of the fiscal year, as far as regards those rates.
Any questions for Mr. Wood?
Just a quick comment, if I could, on this chairman. It is my understanding that the rate increase on the rural side was now determined to be a temporary rate increase. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. They said at that meeting it was designed to be temporary, and so they will be coming to us with a new rate between now and June 30th. And so that's what I'll come back to you with at that time. And we were able to present our finding as to where we thought the rate structure should be, and so they've taken that under advisement and, and are reviewing everything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Moving on to unfinished business, item number three, motion to approve resolution agreement and lease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education regarding Wayne County Public School renovation projects. Mr. Wood, this is an action item.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn this over to the county attorney. He's prepared all of these resolutions and agreements for you. Let him walk you through that.
As you remember, you have approved the expenditure of $12,320,463 for the renovation of Charles B. Acot High School, Spring Creek Elementary School, Goldsboro High School, Dillon Middle School, and Carver Heights Middle School campuses, in an effort to make sure that the Wayne County taxpayers get the full benefit of the current law. It is necessary for the Board of Education to convey these schools to the county so the county can own them, and then the county will appoint, and through these documents appoints the Board of Education to be its agent to enter into the contracts. And it might sound like a torturous process, but under the current law, that's the only way Wayne County taxpayers can get the benefit of having the sales tax refund to them. So that's what these documents do, and these are the same kind of resolutions that you have had in the past when you've done the same thing to be able to save the Wayne County taxpayers that tax, sales tax, and get it back. The theory is that you will, and in these cases, because the money is already available, you will use, as soon as the warranty period is over, you'll reconvey these schools back to the Board of Education. In the meantime, there'll be a lease that you are leasing them back to them so they can continue to use them during the period of construction and reconstruction. I would recommend that you adopt these.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doughty.
I move that we approve the resolution, the agreement, and the lease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education regarding Wayne County Public School renovation projects.
I have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Motion...